Birkaç insanın bu koltuğunu kaldırdı ve diğer koltuğa geçti. Şimdi, Red Koltuğunun ilk sesini açacağım. Yeka Windpower Project hakkında. General Director Murat Zekeriya Ayden'in bu sesini moderat edecektir. Söyredenler Sebatin Öz, Enerji Hareketleri Generali. Halkan Yıldırım, aslında burada olamaz. Türklerler'den Çoruk'un var. Son panelist, Siemens Gomesa CEO. yeni Wind CEO, Ebru Çetkeliyot.
Çok güzel bir oturum, Sayın Genel Bilirsin. Mikrofon sizde.
Teşekkür ediyoruz. Ben de katılımcıları ve hepsini tekrar saygıyla selamlıyorum. Şimdi çok kritik bir oturum. Çok da lafı uzatmadan ben özel...
Çok fazla zamanımı almak istemiyorum. Ve bunun öne kadar, benim için gerçekten bu tür toplantılar değerli olduğunu söylemek istiyorum. Koordinasyon, iletişim, genel olarak bu tür toplantıların içinde işe yarayınca. Ve katılımcılarla bizim görüşlerimizi ve fikirlerimizi paylaşabiliriz. Bu yüzden, katılımcılar ve panelistler açısından da, panelistlerin sayısı azalacak gibi düşündüm. Böylece, onlar daha fazla zamanı alabilirler. Çünkü diğer panelistlerde, genel olarak panelistlerin sayısı çok yüksek. Bu nedenle, her kişi 10 dakika alır. Ve sonra, her şeyi çok kısa bir süre içinde bitirmeleri lazım. Bu yüzden, panelistlerin sayısıı azaltılacak gibi düşündüm. Ve bugün yapacağımız şey bu. Şimdi üç panelist var. Ve şimdi, pozitif discriminasyona sahip olmak üzere, Ebru Hanım'a başlayacağım. Ona başlayacak. Ona yaklaşık 10-15 dakika zamanı var. Hareketlerine bahsetmek için. Şimdi ona hale getirmek istiyorum, investasyonlar üzerindeki noktaların nerede? Ve ne yaptıkları ve planlandıkları.
Evet, bunlar hakkında konuşmak istedim. Önce, katılımcılarımıza merhabalar vermek istiyorum. Hazırdan hoş geldiniz. Simons Gomesa family'ı tanıştım. Bu family'i bir hafta önce katıldım. Aslında, son hafta benim için çok zor bir hafta oldu. Türkiye'de, çok fazla aktör var. Ve böyle önemli bir organizasyon var. Türkiye'de Wind sektörünün gelişimi üzerine büyük bir odaklanıyor. Bu organizasyonun bir parçası olmak için çok mutluyum. Ve bir hafta içinde ofisteydim, dediğim gibi. Ve bir hafta içinde buraya gelip size hemen anlatacak olmak için çok mutluyum. Ve önce Wind sektöründe çalıştığım şeye sahip oldum. Bu yüzden, bazılarınız önce gördüğüm ve bazılarınız yarın tanıştığımız şeye sahip olduğunuzu hatırlayacağım. Ve bu başarılı bir organizasyon için, Ateseven'in ve onun için teşekkür ederim. Ve General Director Sebatin ve Çoruk'lar için teşekkür ederiz. Onların katılımcılığı ve sektörü için de katkılarını size teşekkür ederiz. Yani, Wind sektöründe, diğer infrastruktur sektörlerinden de karmaşık bir investasyon var. Bu investasyonları efektif ve hızlıca gerçekleştirmek için, bir ortak düşünme ve güçlerimizi bir araya getirmemiz gerek. Bu çok önemli. Bu açıdan, bu tür olaylar, farklı şirketlerden birbirleriyle toprulma için, çok değerli. Bu yüzden, bu organizasyon için tekrar teşekkür ederim. Siemens Gomesa. Ayrıca, şirketimizin başka bazı Ofisleri var. Finanslama, nakit, servis, maintenance. Şirketimizin tüm departmanlarından Ofisler var. Eğer sorunuz varsa, bu organizasyonun, bu olayın içinde, sektörün hakkında genel bir konuşma yapmak istiyorsanız, bu arkadaşlarımızın ile tanışması ve tanışması için hoş geldiniz. Aslında, Simons Gomesa ile paylaştık. Yeka proje hakkında konuşacağım. Renüvable Energy Resource Zone (REZ) projenin. Ve Çoruk, bu konu hakkında detayları anlatacak. Proje hakkında detayları. Şimdi, yani, Türkiye'de Yeka projelerinin hakkında üç önemli nokta konularına odaklanacağım. Önce, Kalyon Türkler, Simons Gomesa ile ilgili konserimizde, Simons Gomesa ile ilgili konserimizde, ilk Yeka proje sırasında ne yaptık? Bu konuda başlayacağım. Devletin nasıl gerçekleştiğini belirtmek için. Ve sonra, ilerlediğin Yeka projelerinin ilerleyişine yönelik on şurada Yeka projeleri hakkında konuşacağım. Onları hakkında görüşmeyi paylaşmak istiyorum. Ve son olarak, ilerlediğin Yeka projelerinin ilerlediğine yönelik off şurada Yeka projeleri hakkında konuşacağım. Bu konu hakkında birkaç fikrimi paylaşacağım. Simons Gomesa'nın çoğu biliyor. Bu sektördeki insanlar, şirketimizi biliyor. Bu yüzden, şirketimizi size tanıtmak için zaman geçirmem. Ama bir önemli noktayı belirtmek istiyorum. Simons Gomesa, Wind enerjisi sektöründe bulundu. Ve önemli projeler yaptı. Ve bu sektör için çok güçlü bir etkinlik sağlıyor. Ve bizim şirketlerimizle, partnerimizle aynı şekilde, sektörde işlerin devam etmeye çalışıyoruz. Biliyoruz ki, konserimizle birlikte ilk Yeka proje almıştık. Ve bu yıl imkanlamaya başladık. Ve Avrupa'da en önemli Renüvable Energy projeleri olan, bu projenin bir kaynağı olarak bizim için çok heyecanlı. Biz ona çok heyecanlıyız. Şirketimiz, Türkiye'de global standartlara göre nakitlik serbestliklerini sağlamanın amaçını yapıyoruz. Ve ana hedef, Türkiye'de yapılmıştır olan turbinlerin üretimi. Türkiye'de yapılmıştır. Ve Türkiye'de clean energy supply kurulması istiyoruz. Bu hedefe katkıda bulunmak istiyoruz. Yani, Simons Gomesa olarak şirketimizde ne yaptık? Şirketimizin yerel içerik taleplerini达到了. Ve bu hedefe, İzmir Aliyah bölgesindeki yerel üretmen şirketini kurduk. Üretmen şirketini oluşturacağız. Ve burada, Simons Gomesa ürünleri üretilecektir. Bu hedefimiz. Ve bu yıl içinde kuruldu. Ve devam ediyor. Aslında, çok hızlı devam ediyor. Bugün oraya gideceksen, kuru temelin hazır olacak. Ve kırklar hazır olacak. Ve bugün oraya gideceksen, yapıştırma aşamasında yapıştırma projesiye bakarsanız, yapıştırma projesiye bakabilirsiniz. Bu yüzden, çok hızlı devam ediyor. Ve bu investasyon, Türkiye'de oldukça fazla işe yarayacak. İlk etkide, üretmen şirketimize 100 kişiyi sarayacak. Bu, benim konuştuğum direk işe yarayacak. Ve ayrıca, indirect işe yarayacak. Üretmen şirketlerimiz üzerinden, 500 yeni işe yarayacak. Bu, bizim için çok değerli, önemli. Ayrıca, Türkiye'de, Simons Gomesa, Türkiye'de Wind Turbin Research ve Devlet Centeri oluşturacak. Bu hedefe doğru geliyor. Bu RND Centeri İzmir'de oluşturacak. Ancak, doğru yerin açık değil. Bu konuda bitmeye başlıyoruz. Ve referans şartları belirledi. Ve organizasyon strukturu var. Ve işe yarayacak süreç çok yakında başlayacak. Ve RND Centeri 2019 yılında operasyon olacak. Bu, hedefimiz. Ve bu RND Centeri, global center olacak. Simons Gomesa'nın global organizasyonu içerisinde global center olacak. Bugün, Türkiye'de, global projelerde çalışan yüz bin RND ingineri var. Bu modeli, Simons Gomesa Wind Energy Parti'nde kullanacağız. Ve Türkiye'den RND inginerleri ile gerçekleştireceğiz. Hadi, aktivitelerimiz hakkında konuşalım. Üretmen şirketimizi, RND Centeri kurmak için yaptığımız işler. Her şeyi çok planlı bir şekilde yapıyoruz. Spezifik planlar, proje planları var. Ve üretmen Centeri ve RND Centeri için ayrılmış yöneticiler var. Ve tüm fonksiyonlarla birlikte, bu iki alanın kuru geliştirilmesi var. Bu proje. Yani, Yeka proje almış oldukken, kontrat şartları ile zaman çizimi ile uygunlaştık. Bizim için verildiği tüm görevleri yaptı. Bizim için tüm korkunçlar bitireceğiz. Bu kadar yaptık. Ve Simons Gomesa olarak yaptığımız tüm emirlerini tamamlayacağız. Ayrıca, üretmen şirketimizi, RND Centeri oluşturmayı da yapmaya başladık. Bizimle sürekli olarak, Ministry'den Ofislerle tanışıyoruz. Bu konudaki. Ve bu projelerde yaptığımız işleri, Ministry Ofislerle paylaşıyoruz. Yeka 2'ye de konuşmak istiyorum. Simons Gomesa, Wind enerjinin potansiyeli çok yüksek. Bu potansiyeliyi güvenimizle alıyoruz. Ve bu güvenin根據, üretmen şirketimiz için bir üretmen setini kurduk. Ve Yeka mekanizmını gerçekten çok önem veriyoruz. Wind enerjinin gelecek yılların içinde daha önemli olacak. Bu yüzden, Yeka 1'ine ek olarak, bu alanın daha fazla projeleri için ilgi çekiyoruz. Ve bu alanın gelişimini çok sık monitorlayıyoruz. Ve kurulmuş kapasite, kurulmuş enerji, bu projelerden çok hızlı artacak. Bu, bizim inandığımız şey. Ayrıca, Türkiye'de eklenen yerel üretmen ve değerlerin maximizasyonu olacak. Bu, hedefimiz. Ve doğru planlama ile, doğru parametrelerle, bu Yeka projeleri, düşünüyorum, eklenen değer sağlayacak. Ve Yeka'nın içinde, düşünüyorum, Türkiye'de yerel üretmenle birlikte bir nakit serbestliği başlatacağız. Ve Simons Gomesa ve üretmen Centeri, bizim inandığımız için regional önem taşıyor. Bu yüzden, Türkiye'yi yalnızca değiliz. Ayrıca, bölgedeki ülkeleri de考慮, onlara katkıda bulunabilir miyiz. Simons Gomesa olarak bizim hedefimiz, Wind enerjinin export üretilmesini dönüştürmek. Ve regional temel olarak, Türkiye'yi bir regional temel olarak göstermek istiyoruz. Bu için, investasyonlar için doğru koşullar gerekmelidir. Bu çok önemli. Çünkü, Simons Gomesa gibi global organizasyonlarda, investasyonlara ihtiyaç duyduysanız, ayrıca, diğer ülkelerin, investasyonlara ihtiyaç duyduğu ülkelerle, rival olmak için gereken diğer ülkelerle ilgili konuları考慮 Türkiye kazanmak için. Bu çok önemli. Bize eklemek istiyorum. Türkiye'de, şu anda, işe yarayacak. İşe yarayacak işe yarayacak. Teknoloji transferi artacak. Bu, bizim makro hedeflerimiz. Ve Yeka 2'ye göre, bizim hedeflerimiz yerel üretmeni güçlendirmek ve devam etmek. Diğer yani, Türkiye'deki Wind enerjinin bir rival ve güçlü noktaya geçmek istiyoruz. Ve bizim inandığımız yerel üretmen, bu için çok önemli.
Yeka also provided us some positive impetus. And we worked on identifying, determining the highest wind energy potential sites. So we performed very detailed wind energy analysis. The regions were, the regions included Trace, Edirne region, Sivas and Eskişehir region. We had three regions to focus on. And in these regions, the tender price was awarded with 3.48. We will be working within a project period of fifteen years. So first, we performed very detailed works and studies together with Siemens and internationally accredited companies prepared drafted energy reports. So for more than one year, both from technical perspective, to catch, to identify the wind energy sites with the highest potential. And we just narrowed down the sites with optimization. So we created Yeka zones, renewable energy resource zones, in the most appropriate sites, in the most appropriate regions. After making consortium agreements between the parties turbine sales purchase agreements, consortium agreements and service and maintenance agreements, we undersigned a Yeka agreement on twenty-sixth of February. And as of that date, we started officially, we officially started one thousand megawatts of Yeka projects. From then on, we detailed our technical works. So in addition to wind energy, we've performed detailed analysis of wind energies, operation costs and other relevant costs were studied by us in the sites, in the zones. And candidate Yeka zones, renewable energy resource zones, were identified. And they were, they were about one thousand and seven hundred megawatts. Together with the substitute capacity, additional capacity stipulated in the technical specifications, we performed very detailed examinations in twelve candidate sites. And as a result of the analysis, energy, with the DG for Energy Affairs, we identified them on twenty-sixth of May. It was a very detailed analysis and process for us. And the most significant contribution of Yeka system is to find and reach the places with the highest wind energy potential. After all these efforts and works, DG for Energy Affairs started talking with companies, institutions. They performed consultations with one hundred and sixty institutions. And the compliance reports and all other documents have been studied by the DG for Energy Affairs. And four months later, in September, we were given the sites which are selected from among the candidate Yekas. Some changes and amendments were made. But then, we identified, we specified the final sites to work on. And as you may all know, on twenty-ninth of September, we announced final candidate Yekas. We all know very well the technical specifications. Seven hundred megawatts of site was on Trace. Sivas was twenty, two hundred and fifty megawatts. Eskişehir was two hundred and fifty megawatts too. So the biggest site is Kırkla Reles site with four hundred and six megawatts, two hundred ninety-four megawatts in Edirne. We had two separate license areas in Sivas, in Kangal and Gürün, one hundred and sixty megawatts and ninety megawatts. In total, twenty, two hundred and fifty megawatts in Sivas. And in Eskişehir, there was a fifty megawatts of project site to work on. They were all identified, they were all determined and became final. These technical works, while performing these technical works, starting from the very first day, we also started project financing works, which is of significance. One thousand megawatts of projects needs, of course, financing. And for that, the capacity factors and the highest points, the peak points of capacity factors were identified. And non-recourse project financing works. In order to conduct these works, we assembled an international team. And in that team, within that team, we have worked with pioneering companies to establish a legal basis. We're working together with international law firms, insurance firms, and also financial arrangers are all working together. And as of twenty-sixth of February, we performed a very detailed work. And we started our works together with the relevant partners. These financial works and efforts are very important for such projects. And these international works actually are taking into account existing legislations, regulations, contracts and agreements. They were all studied. And an infrastructure, a financial infrastructure has been devised. And this took a long time. And as of this week, as of today, after Yekas were conveyed to us in the official gazette, we are now working on applying for a preliminary license for Yeka sites of one thousand megawatts. And in the upcoming period, and after that preliminary license, within ninety days, as mentioned in the technical specifications, if found appropriate by Energy Market Regulatory Authority, we will be given, granted a preliminary license as of October, as of January or February. And the duration of it is twenty-four months. So the grants, the permits, licenses, environment licenses and impact analysis, after performing all these analyses, then will come the licensing period. And that licensing period, after it is finalized, as you may all know, for each and every project, there is a mounting and commissioning period of thirty-six months, which we will begin. I wanted to emphasize that Yeka system and the experience we gained throughout this process, I'd like to say that the Yeka system will be used in the future projects. And we believe that it is appropriate and we are the pioneer and we are the very first in these projects. And we exerted every effort to be successful. And the highest electricity generation rates and capacity factors that are presented with Yeka are achieved by us in terms of finance and project financing. When we started Yeka, the financial environment is not the same. And it won't be the same in the upcoming three or six months. We all know that. And as I mentioned before, the international financial structure and as a result of all our works and efforts undertaken, we have a target of financing and finalization of all these projects. I should say that Siemens contributed a lot, sponsors and participants, including Kalion Energy and Türkerler's contributions are very important. They made every concession to make it possible, to make it successful. And they're continuing to do so. And we want to have it with our Plan A. But we also have Plan B and Plan Cs as well. But among all these, among all these plans, the ultimate goal is to have these projects financed and be implemented as very first Yeka projects. So the administration, company partners, plant partners, factory partners, we're working in cooperation and coordination. And the changes in the conditions and affecting the changes in a timely manner. And then realizing the project is our main objective. And success is also main objective. And if necessary, we just want to and work to perform all the changes in a timely manner without any problem. And we have our works and projects underway, which are supporting that. We will do it and we will achieve it. Thank you very much.
We would like to thank Mr. Çoru. We can summarize what you said as follows. It's an exhaustive process and you have completed it successfully. Came to reach the level of preliminary licensing. And what you have done so far is very valuable. And it is an indication of that the project is progressing in the right way, in the right direction. So what will happen in the future, in the forthcoming period? This is also a point of interest. Mister, Mrs. April said Yeka is very important and it should continue. And in terms of wind power plants, one thousand megawatts, two hundred and fifty times four megawatts will be auctioned and in the future in Turkey, in the upcoming period. And about Yeka, let me say that it is an ongoing process. It is viable. And we have some terms of reference and some contracts that we are using. And in all of these, we are taking your opinions of investors. And in the Yeka model, what improvements can be made? And which other arrangements, regulations are necessary? We're working on this. We continue to work on all of this. And in the sector also, very important arrangements, regulations will be declared, announced, and the sector will realize that improvements have been made. Now I would like to leave the floor to Mr. Öz, Sabatın Öz. We are working very closely with him in this field. He will speak about the upcoming period and the additional amendments or changes in the terms of reference and some other aspects that he would like to elaborate on. The floor is yours. Thank you, distinguished audience. I would like to extend my greetings. Siemens and VPP Company, Mr. Çoru gave detailed information about the Yeka projects in Turkey. We are at the pre-licensing period for all the projects. And before talking about the upcoming period, let me give you some background information about the process up to this point. The first law was the amendment number sixteen ninety-four. It was the law amending the law number fifty-three forty-six. And it provided the framework for Yeka projects. And it was the sixth article in the law about Yekas, just four lines long, it wasn't very long. So it was enacted in nine, twenty thirteen. But nothing was done about it for the next five years. In two thousand thirteen, in line with the local equipment studies and local production efforts, this amendment was actually triggered. Or maybe we then did something about this. We made this amendment to the law, but it wasn't detailed enough. And it wasn't sufficient. So then, we turned this into a bundle law. And we added a few more articles. And it was discussed actually. But the election process was about to begin. And we failed to pass the law because of the upcoming elections. And then it was rejected once. But then during the Berat Albayrak, the previous Energy Minister's period, it was on the agenda again, it was discussed again. And then it was finalized and reached its final form as the Yeka articles that we know today. So Yeka regulation provides a financial model for contests. It's a contest model. And as the Energy Directorate, Energy Affairs Directorate, we have been providing incentives for local manufacturing. And with a sort of evolution in this field, we have reached Yeka projects. So domestic production, local manufacturing is very important for us. It is indispensable. So in addition to local resources for electricity generation, it is also important to resort to local manufacturing for equipments. So we realized that it was possible to manufacture all of the equipment in Turkey. And this was our utmost objective. The first two were concluded successfully. And actually, I think if in terms of Yeka, what is more difficult than building them is implementing, managing them. The upcoming period is very important. Even during the first one, we said Yeka one, Yeka two. And now I think there will also be Yeka three. If there wouldn't be thirty Yekas, we wouldn't give any numbers like one or two. And we will make a new announcement for four times two hundred and fifty megawatts. Yeka VPP two is its name. And as the officials on the government side, ministry side, you want everything to be faster. Of course, our senior managers, directors want everything to be faster, to go faster. But we have problem keeping up with the pace of all of this. And I'm here this morning. And in the afternoon, I will go back to my office for the monthly meetings on Yeka VPP one, where we are headed to, whether there are any problems. We are discussing these all the time. And we have a very busy schedule. And these are very important projects, one billion dollars of worth and one thousand megawatts of capacity. And the terms of reference, the information, the terms of reference were prepared based on the knowledge that we had back then. But even in one year's time, a lot is changing. And there's a need for updates. And for the new Yekas, there are always some changes. They are always different from the first one, the previous one. And we will hold four contests this time. And there will be probably four winners and four different prices. So in terms of management, what does it mean to us? We will have a single contract. We have a single contract now. But for VPP two, we will have four contracts and four firms that we will be dealing with or communicating with. And Mr. Minister also mentioned that Çanakkale, Balıkesir, Aydın, Mula are the provinces in which we will have two hundred and fifty megawatts of capacity each. It will be announced. And four hundred megawatts for the Trace is another project. So such collective sites, collective projects may not always be possible. So we are, we also allow small, multiple number of small projects to be collected under one umbrella project. So it is also important, we also attach importance to local equipment manufacturing. So in Yeka, it is very important. And considering the normal licensed projects, we are not dealing with them actually, but they're almost like on the same lane. So there may be overlapping between the, between Yeka and licensed projects, whether Yeka is an alternative to licensed projects. This is a question that people are sometimes asking. Why is this question rising? They believe there are some delays because there are some overlaps between these two. But actually, this is not the case. So in the same field, in the same region, when you have both Yeka and licensed projects, these may sometimes affect one another. So there will be a delay, like we will prioritize Yeka and licensed projects will come later. As you know, in two thousand seventeen, there were two contests. We started with seven for wind and the price then fell down to three point forty-eight. Siemens, Kalion Türkerler is a very successful consortium. I would like to thank them for their performance in the contest and for their projects so far. And both in terms of the factory, the Siemens performance and Kalion Türkerler, VPP project companies' performance is very high, is very strong. And it is a model that the private sector is not used to. And in Yeka, we want to become the one-stop shop actually. Actually, we are willing to become a one-stop shop. Because we are always telling the consortium members to always apply to us if they face any problems. And this is something that the private sector is not used to. So they believe maybe sometimes that they have to deal with every problem, every challenge on the way. But it is not the case because the delays in the course of the project may lead to negative outcomes, like the cancellation of the project even. So it is very important. So we also want to improve the investment atmosphere, environment. And if we are a part to this project, to a project, we want that project to progress without any problems and progress rapidly. So for that, and for that reason, we are working on a voluntary basis and providing support and trying to act as a one-stop shop for the companies involved. And globally, local production up to sixty percent is the case for the turbine equipment manufacturing. Globally, sixty percent local production is the case. And R and D is very important. The assembly company, R and D company will be established by Siemens. In Izmir also, there are plans to establish an R and D center. And for the personnel to be employed in the R and D center, eighty percent local content requirement will be applied. And I think forty-seven million dollars of equipment purchase, of expenditure will be there except for the equipment purchasing for the ten years to come. So these are all very important issues. The first wind turbine manufacturing company will be established in Turkey. And it will serve not just for Turkey, but also for the close geography, including the countries of the region and Europe. And in terms of renewable energies and equipment manufacturing, it is one, a good step towards making Turkey the energy hub. So when you complete the projects for one thousand megawatt capacity, then we will still continue with manufacturing and with R and D activities. So we are very happy with the developments in this field. And everything is going smoothly, in line with the time schedule. We don't have any problems in this respect. It is also a very important project, both for Europe as well as the rest of the world. Both the VPP and Yeka one projects are very important. And during VPP one particularly for nationalization or localization, we consulted with international firms to find out the examples in other countries. In Mexico, for example, they applied localization just for the blade. But halfway, they had to cancel it, I think, as far as I'm concerned. And one week later, they came to us. They take, took an interest in our project. And they took the terms of reference in English to discuss it in their own country. And ERA is also interested in this. On the webpage, there is still a link about this project in Turkey. We talked about Yeka VPP two. And you will be able to find the details in the terms of reference. The local content requirements will be similar. As I have mentioned, no Yeka is the same with one another. With Yeka VPP one, we were more comfortable because it was the first of its kind. But now that we are proceeding with the second one, there is an established price, then there's a local manufacturing factory which is about to be established. So while carrying out the second project, we shouldn't leave what the previous one, what we have in hand. And also, we need to focus more on local manufacturing. So the terms of reference will take these into account. Actually, we have taken these into account while drafting the terms of reference. A new manufacturing facility may be established or the current manufacturing facilities can be used in the second project. But what makes our, makes us excited is that the ecosystem that suppliers, which will be involved, they are important. And Siemens or other wind turbine manufacturers are supplying equipment from local manufacturers, local suppliers. And this makes us very happy. There are two questions actually we need, needed to answer. What are we currently manufacturing? What can we produce? The towers and blades, we were manufacturing them. But before we started Yeka two, now we have two companies who are producing generators. And the, including the electromechanical parts and other equipment that we have local requirements, local manufacturing requirements for, we believe they have sufficient capacity. And we also made onsite visits. And I think Yeka two is more mature in terms of the local content requirements. And about offshore, Mr. Minister provided information yesterday. The first contest was postponed. I think more detailed surveys will be carried out. And it will be refined further. And based on the instructions that we will be receiving, we will make a new schedule. And then maybe it will be on our agenda in the next days to come. And the Wind Energy Association of Turkey, also associations about solar energy, sectoral associations, are very important for us. The refined information, the refined knowledge which will arise from these associations will be directing everything. And in nineteen ninety-two, actually, we established this association while all the board members, including the president, were still going to high school. So the aim of establishing this association was to have an expert in the sector so that the problems from the sector would be conveyed to us, the ministry, and we would be helping them deal with the problems. So I believe it is very valuable, these associations. And I believe the sector should be a step ahead of the public sector. So from the ministry, the companies should be a step ahead of us. This is important. So with these ideas in mind, I would like to leave the floor to you.
Thank you very much, Sabatın Bey. Sabatın Bey mentioned the progression and the background of these efforts. Since two thousand and sixteen, the transformation and the change period and the fallout of this period and the legal infrastructure he mentioned. Preparing our drafting legislation is a tough and tiresome process. You should not miss out anything. There won't, shouldn't be any missing points. And you need to revise it all the time, to correct it, to give it a final shape. This is the case in companies abroad as well. There are frequent amendments in the legislation. Yes, this is the case, and there is a need for amending the legislation. But this is the case for the UK, for the US. So some regulations, some provisions should be adapted within time, should be amended within time. That is why these modifications are needed to be made. There is a motto I use, if possible, flexible legislations that can meet the requirements within time. We need to apply them strictly and pass them into law so that there won't be a need for frequent amendments to the law. So while preparing a legislation, I wanted to end, underline or emphasize this. We have enough time for us and for questions. We have even more than enough time to express ourselves and answer the questions. Now, I'm going to ask a question. This is about why there is a lack of not application, applying to offshore tenders, offshore applying to offshore tenders, offshore wind tenders. Eh this is an anonymous question. It was mentioned by Sebatin and it was mentioned by our minister yesterday, both at the point of measurement. Eh when the companies do not feel confident enough and the investors do not confident, feel confident enough. Or if there are different expectations for opening price. And that may be the reason behind why eh these tenders are not applied to. And eh when, actually eh we also mentioned the balancing periods and the balancing process. So this also may affect eh applications to the tenders. But it will be on our agenda in the future as well. As mentioned very well by Ebru, eh Ebru Hanım, Rüzgar's eh winds feature lies on offshore. Yes, we did not give up on offshore wind. So we will make necessary evaluations, assessments, and we will take it into our agenda once again in a short while. Güven Toktaş has a question to Ebru Hanım. We would like to ask the question. In Izmir Ala, a plant is planned to be established. So what are the types of turbines? Or what are, is the type of turbine that are planned? And the time of delivery of turbine? And should we wait until the results of YECA Two to apply to it or to be a part of it? Turbine type at the beginning, by the way, the works are underway. But the focal point is eh about the types that are included in YECA contract. So when identifying the turbine type or which products are to be manufactured, the decision, the final decision. Are you waiting for YECA Two to eh reach a final decision? No, we are not waiting for YECA Two. We, for the time being, eh are focusing on YECA One. So at the beginning, the determining point eh will be YECA One project. But as I mentioned before, that plant is not planned as a short-term objective or a short-term project. This is a long-term objective. So in line with the conditions and in line with the existing conditions, to turn Turkey into a eh regional manufacturing hub, eh we are exerting every effort with that vision in our minds. I want to add on to that. On our investment projects, the turbine types that are used eh are determined in the first contracts and first application processes. So four point four, two megawatts, one hundred and forty-five rotor diameter, eh one hundred and seven and one hundred and seven point five tower heights are determined eh for the turbines and turbine types. And all our feasibility works and surveys were, and financial eh plans were based on these data. As stipulated in the tender in the contract, it was decided well in advance. And we can say that eh we have eh made great strides in that field. So eh I still turn to you with another question regarding non-recourse finance. Are you negotiating with local banks? And what is the attitude of local ban, banks in non-recourse finance? Is there a date for eh the finalization? We know the financial situation in Turkey. So be it thirty, forty, or fifty megawatts of projects, we know the existing eh financial situation in Turkey. We have a fifteen years of tariff. And we are working to have a project financing. And we worked very diligently on its infrastructure. And we can say that eh with the legislation. And in order to have a project financing, we performed, prepared all the works, all the studies. Local banks was your question. In terms of guarantees, they can be used in normal project financing. This is what is foreseen. However, the current conjuncture eh may allow it to some extent. But of course, we believe that we will find a way and they will be sorted out. But the target is that the finalization of project financing is, as mentioned by Ebru Hanım, eh by the end of two thousand and nineteen, in November or December of two thousand and nineteen, we are planning to start mounting of our first project. So preparation of the sites and before that receiving the financing and sourcing and eh the initial operation of turbines, we need to finalize the financing by March, May, eh March, April and May, two thousand and nineteen. By this time, we are planning to finalize and close the financing and then complete eh YECA mounting or installation process. Eh maybe my answer regarding local banks eh is not very exhaustive. But this is a process and we will try to see it within time. Eh be it local banks or foreign banks. When we're speaking about financial closure, six or seven months of period eh can be very hectic. And in that time, eh you need to have very frequent meetings and negotiations with the banks. And that process is not an easy one, a simple one. However, eh local banks may be involved to a some extent in that mechanism or this may not be the case. So these are long eh processes that needs utmost patience. To Ebru Hanım, regarding offshore, I want to ask a question. One of the participants is asking that question. If offshore is to be included, if Siemens Gamesa is included in the offshore YECA, are they planning to establish, install another plant for direct YECA? I can't give a specific answer to that question because there are so many unknown factors. The project parameters, the project conditions should be shaped before answering that question. But in parallel with what I have said before, local manufacturing is a critical point in Turkey when it comes to development of wind energy sector in Turkey. So if the conditions are ripened and if there are good conditions, then we will approach to it by take it into account. Thank you very much. Eh there is another question to Sebatin Bey. Eh energy transformation model is based on incentives. What about the social cost of energy transformation model? I couldn't quite get the question, but the social costs, well, within YECA model eh apart from our projects, eh there is no extra social costs, I can say. Our YECA project is an ongoing one. And it is about eh the time before the licensing period. And then, just like the case in Kalyon eh Türkerler, they will continue eh with what is required with licensing, with environmental impact assessments, et cetera. However, if the question is about emerging costs, or let me ask the question like that. In two thousand and fifteen applications, contest in two thousand and seventeen, plus and minus prices eh and the eh power plants were purchased eh for seven point three cents or eight cents. And what about the social impact effect of these prices or this situation? Up to now, eh no work has been performed in order to identify the social costs. As mentioned by Sebatin Bey, I want to say that the states, the governments have three instruments, subsidy, eh tax, and eh incentives. That is how they guide eh, they steer the markets and eh have the investments in line with their policy prioritization. So incentive mechanism, project incentive mechanisms, well, we are eh encouraging renewables to the highest level. However, it is different for YECA's. YECA's have a new direction, dimension. So seven point three cents and eh local contribution, plus local contribution. In order eh instead of that system eh, a price will be determined by a tender mechanism. So creating eh a measurement eh Creating a scale by the state? Well, we shouldn't consider it as a standard incentive method. So it focuses on the market and international markets, the world markets. And we devise that model accordingly. One another question to Celik Leyurt. For technology transfer, are you cooperating with universities or not? And local manufacturing incentives? How should these incentives eh will be? Eh world trade organizations and EU's situation? By taking into these two institutions position, eh can you tell us how it will be or how it should be? Thank you for the question. Regarding the first question, yes, we are cooperating with the universities. Actually, not only with universities, but with local administrations. Especially eh we are concentrating on Izmir region of Turkey. So together with different organizations and institutions, we joined our forces and by receiving support from them eh we are eh moving on. Yes, in this picture, there is a role of universities. In your second question, re- regarding incentive mechanisms, I want to repeat what I have said. Mechanisms, local content will be maximized and will provide maximum eh contribution to the market. It should be like that. There will be some different versions. However, we have to focus on the principle. And we should work with a result-oriented model. Eh this should be eh our focal point.
Another question to Ebru Hanım again. All the questions are for me. So we understand that this plant, this factory you mentioned, our participants are excited about it. They want to know when the construction will end, when it will become operational and about its sale to the final user. Can you say anything? In November two thousand and nineteen, we will finish the construction. And capacity, a hundred nacelles per year, initial capacity. This is what we are planning. But as I have mentioned, with the right conditions, if we can position it as a regional hub for Turkey, I think we will increase the capacity then. And considering other countries, Turkey should have a more competitive financial analysis, should present a more co, become more competitive. This is how we evaluate our footprint as company. From the financial point of view, considering Turkey, if Turkey provides a more rational option in terms of cost, then many of the projects in Europe can move their manufacturing to Turkey. So this is what we are aiming for. Thank you for the answers. Now, I would like to turn to the audience and ask them if they have any final questions because eh we are about to finish the session. We don't have any other written questions. You can raise your hands and ask your questions verbally rather than writing them down. Are there any questions? As far as I'm concerned, according to the Terms of Reference, it was one hundred and fifteen nacelles or four hundred and fifty megawatts per year, the production eh objective commitment. But you said a hundred nacelles, so it's different from the Terms of Reference. Yes, it is for the final user, for the market. But in the Terms of Reference, it is one hundred and fifteen nacelles, so I have to correct it. Good morning, I have a question to Mr. Çuru. We can't see you, can you please introduce yourself? Melvi Özdemir. First, congratulations about pre-licensing. This one point five years before and after the tender, based on your experience, which recommendations could you give for future potential YECA investors? What lessons have you drawn from your experience? Thank you for your question. First of all, before entering a tender for YECA, you need to carry out some studies, these are very valuable. For YECA Two, the regions which have been determined, you know them, and technical preliminary studies should be carried out in these regions. And it provides the basis for all the investment, the investment as a whole. For YECA One, it was a one thousand megawatts capacity project. And both companies, Kalyon Energy and Türkerler, eh they have a large project portfolio, particularly Türkerler, a vast experience. And many of the studies which were carried out, surveys which were carried out previously in other projects were used. And I think they helped us a lot in being awarded the tender. And eh about financing, maybe eh the capacity factor in the field eh was more than forty percent eh in for P nineties. I can give you this information. The surveys that you will carry out and the bit that you will eh be providing, of course, will differ from one company to the other. But it should be in direct proportion to the objectives of the company. And these preliminary studies, surveys are very important. You shouldn't eh start this if you won't, won't be able to finalize it. And regarding our experience, actually, for one thousand megawatts, we needed to carry out some very detailed studies because it was a very broad, large area. And we used lots of different data, long-term data have been used for preparation. So our experience shows that eh all of these survey studies should be carried out in an accurate way beforehand. And then you should start this path and start this project. For YECA One, in all the contracts, in all the Terms of Reference, of course, eh we gained some experience and faced, faced some challenges because it was the first of its kind. And eh with this opportunity, I would like to thank you, the officials from the ministry, who helped us overcome many barriers that we have come across throughout this process. We joined our forces, acted hand in eh hand in hand with the Energy FA's direct rate. And eh we cooperated on this project. And we cooperated in resolving the challenges, the problems. And in the further future YECA projects, I put emphasis on preliminary studies or preparations. I think you should pay special attention to them. Any other questions? Thank you. I would like to thank the organizers and the participants for this very beneficial organization. I've been in the sector for twenty-five years, Fardı Türk is my name. I received a token of appreciation yes, yesterday night during gala dinner. I was one of the twenty people to receive a plaque. I have a question. As a person with such long experience, I have a question to Mr. Öz, first of all. Within the sector, particularly in the last decade, there are some small, medium-scale or large-scale actors who, some of them are investors, some of them are other stakeholders. In YECA, I think there's a decrease
I think there's a decrease in their number because there's a single investor and there's a single consulting firm that they work with. And if they're not carrying out the construction, there's just one construction firm, maybe two. Maybe two, not one, but maybe two for all of these stakeholders. Of course, nation localization is very important. And back in 1993, '94, I was working for the Turkish Scientific Research Agency, Tubitak, and we proposed a project to UNESCO focusing on localization. I'm saying this because I really value this issue. And about localization, what are your plans? And how are you going to preserve this? The local banks are also another actor because they provide financing for different stages of the project. And for banks to be rendered sustainable in the sector, what are your plans? These are the questions I have. And maybe Mr. Choro, he can share his experience with us. About 1,000 megawatts, he mentioned, it is a huge capacity, huge power. With how many firms did you work with? How many stakeholders did you have? I said you generally have one or two construction firms, one or two consulting firms. And for turbines, there's just one company. So don't you think it is very little in terms of number? And finally, I would like to state my opinion. 40% capacity difference, Choro, they mentioned. As an expert of this issue, capacity factor of 40% is not something that I would agree with. As a person who knows Turkey very well, I don't agree with 40%. I think it's too high. Thank you. Let me start with the last question. Thank you, Ferdi Türksoy. I have worked with him in Gama, in Zorlu Holding, in other companies. We worked with him on different projects. First of all, as a result of the studies carried out, the capacity factor, I said 40%, it may be 42, 38%. Every project is different, every project has different dynamics, as you would also know. And the surveys, the studies, in these, we work with accredited companies and the energy generation reports have been submitted by these companies, more than one firm that we're working with. So is Kalyon Türkerler. It is not just based on our own studies. Also with Siemens, we carried out optimization studies and enabled compliance with the turbine as well. And all the raw data and the measurement data that we have collected and all the wind studies that we have carried out have given us this final percentage for the capacity factor. But of course, we are trying to take it even higher, increase it further. I think it's for uncertainty, we are trying to minimize it, decrease it further and take everything further. And after the final YECA was produced, new pillars, piles were built and the uncertainty will be decreased further. And another question that I would like to answer, continue with, about the projects, stakeholders, different firms working on the projects. We haven't reached that point yet, particularly. We are at the preparation phase. And about drafting the terms of reference, the YECA fields have been declared in September. Before that, we didn't know the field specifically, but we carried out preliminary studies in a very detailed manner. So we won't work with a single construction or electricity company. We have five different fields and the process is very important for us. So we will work with various different companies in the course of the project. But of course, there are some financial limitations. We will ask for the necessary guarantees from the firms for the project financing and I think you would also appreciate when I say that without those guarantees, it's not possible to maintain and complete the project, maintain the structure. So we will work with as many companies as our opportunities would allow. In the first YECA's, as mentioned by our general director, creating a scale economy. And there is an obligation for local manufacturing from the scratch. But for YECA II, and we divided into four, we will see how the upcoming ones will be developed. But in YECA model, there is no obligation to work with a single company. Now, in four contests with 250 megawatts each, by the way, it's quite difficult to manage the process as a whole. We want to have four companies, of course, but it is open to consortium, no, I mean, it is open for consortiums. So big companies, large companies can get together and create consortiums and then they can apply, especially YECA II VPP is open to all actors which are active in wind sector. Local banks, well, we can say that we have a reflex. Of course, it's not, we are getting excited when we receive a foreign financing from foreign banks. And the remaining part of the question was answered by Mr. Choro. I want to underline one aspect here. What is created here is the responsibility of R&amp;D in YECA projects and capacity of R&amp;D and making R&amp;D facilities obligatory within these projects. And up to now, in the existing model, we have reached to a significant extent of local manufacturing in generators, in height, in blades. So manufacturing capacity to have an export rate of 70% is also quite good and promising. But I also agree with you, making it wide spread and we have to consider it as an economic parameter and equal distribution of GDP. From that perspective, for the future, we are also of the opinion that with different installed capacities, with low installed capacities, lower installed capacities, we are open to new projects and implement these projects. These are among our objectives, both for solar, both for wind energy. We are going to implement these and for small-scaled investors, we will also pave the way for small-scaled investors. Last question. Is there any other question? Well, this will be our last question. Then it means that we will answer all your questions. Fevzah Herwis, thank you. Istanbul University Master's student. My master's thesis will be on renewable energy, especially wind energy. As a student, as a university student, when I come here, I took public transportation. I say I am a student, but I am unemployed indeed. So, and I'm thinking about working in this field in the future. My question is to the whole, is to the whole, all the participants, what are your recommendations to the students like me? And in line with the current economic indications of our country, what kind of developments will be there in the future? So in my thesis, I write down that positive things will be happening in the future. However, there will be some reductions or some deteriorations in the data. But how should I interpret the potential of wind energy in line with current indications, economic or financial indications? I can answer your first question and maybe Mr. Choro can answer the second question. I'm volunteered to answer your question. Well, first, congratulations. I would like to congratulate you on coming here. You have asked a question and you are searching for jobs and opportunities. Your existence here is a very important step, a huge step. You did something very well and I would like to congratulate you on your courage for asking that question to us. This shows that you are in the right direction. My recommendation or my suggestion is that you get in contact with as many people as possible and introduce yourself and build some networking and so that we will hear some good news from your side. From an investor's perspective, well, I think that you are in the right path, in the right field. Renewable energy field is a field which will receive the highest amount of investments. 1,000, 1,500 megawatts of investments are made for wind energy. So we believe that these investments will be made and will continue to be made. So actually, having a large investor making huge investment of 1,000 megawatts or having separate investors making such investment, there are some advantages and there are some other factors and disadvantages as well. So I just wanted to say that as well. Well, your thesis subject, you are very right in writing down positive aspects in your thesis. It is very positive and it is very good. Actually, please give your CV to Ebru Hanım. Yes, I was going to ask that too. Please take the public workers' employment test so that we can employ you. But we are wishing to get your CV so that we will hear good news from you. Yes. Actually, I want to get your email address so that I can send my CV. Yes, now this is the right time, I believe. So taking baby steps first will be very good for your future career. So just come here and we will convey you our email addresses so that you can pass your CV to us. So after such blessing, a good deed, now it's time to thank our panelists and present them with their plaques. Thank you very much for your attendance, for your attention. I would like to extend each and every one of you my regards.